Board Chair Karen Bradford. Vice Chair John O'Horn.
Here.
Board Member Daniel Case.
Here.
Board Member Jennifer Hartline. Board Member Dr. Janet Griffin.
Here.
And Superintendent Josh Senior.
Here. Sure, that's right. For the Father, we love you and we thank you for the privilege of being here tonight and for each one of them attendance. I pray, Father, as we go into the meeting tonight, as always, we ask for your wisdom on every decision that's made. May you get honor and glory out of everything that takes place in Jesus' name and prayer, amen.
Please stand up, please. Asia? Salute, please.
I'm a proud nation to the thought of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, it's time for the adoption of agenda and there'll be one addition there. Superintendent has asked that it be amended and PNC Construction change for number two for DCS middle school geo improvements. Do I hear a motion to adopt the agenda as presented with this added addition?
Sure.
All in favor? All right. Do I hear a motion to approve the call? One minutes for the call meeting January the 24th, 2022 at 4:00 PM. We have our scheduled more meeting on January the 24th, 22. The call meeting February the 10th, 2022, and the call meeting for February the 23rd, 2022. Motion to quit all of this, okay? Do I hear a second? Do I hear a second? All in favor?
This is the superintendent's report.
All right. Ms. Bradford, tonight, under department reports, we have several different groups here to speak and present. And starting out, we will have Director of Career and Technology Innovation and NASA Hunch Partner Sheena Hill and Bob Zeig. So, Ms. Hill, would you do?
Thank you guys for having us and thank you parents for coming. I'm so excited to be able to recognize more child for all their accomplishments. I'm just gonna go over and just kind of touch base on what we're doing with the NASA Hunch program. It hasn't broken out because it has been developing and growing as we've been working towards the last couple of years. Our students start out designing and 3D printing in elementary school. grades three through fifth during their STEM enrichment classes using Tinkercad and Microbot 3D printers. Students then advance to the middle schools, sixth through eighth grade, engineering and technology class using industrial level design programs and equipment, SolidWorks and Stratus equipment 3D printers. During this process, they get to advance their base knowledge from elementary to middle school by participating in the NASA Hunch program, printing in Ultum 9085. Those parts are also used for the International Space Station. The Stratus 40450 and 900 MC 3D printers are the only printers capable of this material that we use. Here at Dave Middle School, they have the 40450, which is one of the only ones right now that is designated to print for the NASA Hunch program using this technology. We also, I also want to touch base with Matt Davis. I went by there today and they're actually going to start secondary this nine weeks. So I'm gonna follow those students and see how well they develop, so I'm excited about that as well. The students then take this knowledge and their confidence, because we're building them as we go third through eighth grade, into our high school programs, which we have multiple CTA pathways that are participating in the NASA Hunch program right now. The high school offers the students even more advancement in 3D printing by using three additional materials. They use ASA, nylon carbon fiber, and TPU, and two advanced 3D printers, the 40380 MC Carbon Fiber Edition and the F-170. Bob's gonna touch on carbon fiber tonight a little bit. We also have the ART. That's in the CTA mechatronics pathway, by the way, for those of you that are not aware of what program that's in. ART also participates in our payload patch design program. And we have two upcoming programs, Family and Consumer Science is going to do soon some food science for astronauts. And we are also developing the first health science medical engineering program for design and program. Because of this and our students innovative minds and growth during this process, third through 12th grade, they have developed multiple collaboration products, projects, including the ASTRO Restoration Project, which is what our students are being recognized for. This particular project is going to be displayed at the Smithsonian Museum in Washington DC. So this is pretty awesome that your student got to or that your child got to participate in something at this level. Bob, I'm gonna hand it over to you and let you kind of talk about the health science. The Army contract, and then we'll break off into the ASTRO project and give the students their recognition.
Well, quickly, if you don't know, ma'am, Bob Zeig from NASA, Mo, Space Museum. And the Hunch has a flotilla here, so anybody's interested, you're pretty cool. We have six different disciplines we actually focus on. Designing prototype machine, as Sheena says, we have machining, we have soft goods. We have various forms of VOS, which you guys participated in as well. And the newest one here is our healthcare. And what's happening at this school, it's probably been around since 2003. We started at three schools, now we're into 452 schools in 46 states. This school was the first Ultum 3D printer in the nation, especially in the middle school. We have the carbon fiber machine, which we're tied to our Army contract. We're gonna use this stuff for a Chinook helicopter. And we're gonna start out small modeling of carbon fiber. We also got requests for space station outstarters in carbon fiber. The machines dialed in enough where they can meet the flammability requirements of carbon fiber. So that machine's gonna probably pick up a lot of these here next year or two. But our newest program is this health science program, which is being biomedical engineering and human healthcare. We did a pilot program here this year in the healthcare class, and they picked mental health. And for that mental health, they picked these little sensory smell caps that the crew could take with them on the space station for long duration trips to Mars. And they came up with different scenarios and ideas, simple things like a chapstick holder, maybe, smell. You got these other injection things.
Now, this was a collaboration between mechatronics and health.
Yeah, so it's really, so all said and done, we got these parts, it's great ideas, these design prototype pieces. Because of that, this is one of the designs. Probably not gonna tell you much what that is, but it's a sampling thing with different scents.
Each one of those will be a different sample.
Good like cookies or their Christmas smell they like or something like that, just to bring back whatever they're in the crew cabin. So all said and done, it's such a big hit, we're adding it to our design and prototype package under the middle health and human healthcare for living and working on the moon and actual traveling to Mars. And again, this is the first school, it was the pilot, it's now nationwide. And a result of that, we have a new program, it's gonna make this school a Hunch Center of Excellence. Maybe we have six, five programs in this school running now, from design prototype to CAD to video participating. Now, the healthcare, we're probably going to add a sewing class here too. I don't know if you've ever seen any video on space station, but everything that goes up on space station knows in a bag, whether it's a single dough or triple, it's all quilted and Velcro, zipper, and all kinds of stuff everywhere. Payloaders happen, put all their equipment in those bags, take them out and put them in their experience like it's place. So sewing is a big, big, big package. Sewing, as you know, has kind of gone away, it's used to be really popular. And commercial side is really, it gets you into the art world as far as how you have to cut, stitch, and put stuff together. So it's a great skill to have coming out of high school to find a job. All these schools agree, the whole purpose of this program is to inspire the next generation, which is our youth right here. We think we're doing a pretty good job, and we got stuff for the resume now. This is what's important, they have to put NASA on their resume, mold it out. I don't care if you're in middle school, high school, you carry that with you all the way through. But if you're gonna get a job, it's gonna help you, and read about NASA, talk about what you did. It just shows character build and responsibilities. If you're trying to get grant money to go to college or a scholarship, the spread is gonna work. NASA on your resume is gonna make a big deal, so it's a good honor to have you guys in the program to do that. So all said and done, the Center of Excellence is going to be at this school first time through because we have all these curriculums in place and the requirements, they wrote a white paper on it. This is involved with school, and they actually mentioned they have a school system in the white paper itself, so. Good things are happening there. I'm proud of, our center director getting in about a month to get out of here. So there's some things to add like that, this is probably my crazy, so we're proud of that. So while we're here tonight is this ASTRO project. These guys don't even know the rocket that flew the ASTRO, but this, we're back in the space shuttle vision. Kind of remember the big orange belly rocket with the space shuttle on it. It had two solid rocket boosters on side, the space shuttle would get up in orbit and fly after 16 to 21 days and do payload experiments, and then it would come back down like an aircraft and land. It's the one that blew up two or three times, it's not a good thing to talk about, but yeah. Anyway, ASTRO is a telescope, okay? So here it is right here in this picture, it's kind of hard to see. This is the predecessor, so everybody's heard of the Humble, the telescope that's the next generation after this one. And now they have the Jan Webb, which is already out, away so far out now, if you've missed us, it's down there, it's away. This was ultraviolet, UV, and X-ray images all combined into one package right here. And it flew, like I said, it flew and came back, and it flew second mission. And what we're doing now is they got decommissioned, they got taken apart, they got sulfur scrubbed. And all the parts have been captured, most of the parts have been in the junkyards, people took stuff home for table warmers. They did alcohol, they got stuff out of salvage yards and things like that. And they've been putting this thing back together, and it's gonna end up in the Smithsonian Institute. So these products that the kids are working on now, students are working on now, are gonna get a name around the actual part, representing Dave Middle School or Dave High School and have it be in the Smithsonian. So we're recognizing them tonight with these certificates from the ASTRO team. Look at the history of this project, you can see this is 1980s technology. I don't know if any of you guys are drafting people or not, these are the old sticky. Front view and right side, top view, they don't even know what that is, they didn't even know what that was. Sheena was able to have them orient and get things in spatial orientation, because they're familiar with the CAD, which is the computerized stuff where you got the ISO view, you got at least have a triangle look, or something like that. But it's not only that they didn't know, the machinists that are working in our programs now at some other high schools couldn't interpret this drawing either. So we had to have these 3D parts made, and if you look at one of these drawings, if you look at this drawing right here, that's the simple plate. You can't tell anything about that plate till you hold it up, it's just, it's a simple flat plate. It's got ribs and things on it that way. The most intense part of these brackets right here are actually connected to this plate this way. And if everything's circular, because it's a telescope, right, so everything's round. They had this big horse collar looking thing here, they had it hooked to it. So all these parts were the parts that were missing, and there's still a bunch more to go that they couldn't capture to get this telescope back together. But taking the dimensional drawings and converting to a 3D, into STL, helps get the machinist the view he needs to interpret the drawing, to get it to his software to run the CNC programs to assemble the parts. Now it passes around, usually all the plastic up here, this is what the metal parts look like when they're done. Thanks to these guys here developing those CAD models, so they got a good taste of what's coming up. And here they are in action, you can see the parts, they're holding the parts. So all these parts, we normally don't work on a schedule, but these guys are pushing us to get stuff down and get it through because they have a window, they come up from Kennedy Space Center. And they're using our Space and Rocket Center and Ospor to put this whole package together. It's gonna be on exhibit here for about a year, then it's gonna go to Smithsonian, but that's probably four years out before you get to Smithsonian. It's a whole nother package you gotta do. But it's pretty impressive, here's that ring we just showed you right there, the plate's in there behind it. It's kind of hard to see that.
This is because you're standing so close, you can see it really well.
Here's the bracket right here, the top left right there. We'll show you the whole assembly in a minute, it's pretty neat how it comes together. These are some stainless steel brackets, which are these gray ones over here, they may not look important, but they do remain easy to have a telescope to this structure. Now, they're in plastic here, they're banned, they're sheenings out of stainless steel. Those are pretty tricky too, they may look simple, but it's pretty impressive how they got that stuff to work. So here's what that monster looks like, and this is in the museum now, it's got three focal light tubes up top. And the left side of this thing is the actual called the woodpea, which is Wisconsin, ultraviolet, something, something, real big acronym. Kind of like Hunch, it's kind of weird, but that's the way it works. So here it is, what the brackets that they designed, and these are cut out of metal, and they're painted white. They're painted with a special epoxy paint, which you miss, it doesn't reflect like, it doesn't absorb like. It locks it up, it doesn't get hot, it doesn't change the mechanics of the metal, all kinds of stuff. So there's a lot of neat stuff happening behind the scenes to make it get to that stage right there. So, these guys, like I said in the beginning, in the CAD package people, they're the ones that got the project off the shelf. Got it dimensionalized, got it to the machinist, machinist ran the machine, we delivered our parts. They did the assembly and they put it together now. So we're here to thank them very much, and by doing that, the gentleman that is leading it is the ASTRO that flew on that flight. Mr. Scott, I forgot his last name. He is very enthused to have students here and represent, especially the middle school, you know, and then the high school as well. But the middle school, getting that honor and getting to that level, and being dialed in and being interested in space are two big things. I want to give y'all a big round of, now let's give them a big round of hands. Who do we got first?
Okay, so I'm gonna go ahead and call out the middle school students in order, and then I'll call the high school students out afterwards. Middle school instructor Jenny Gollman, if you'd like to kind of stand up here with your students. I would like to say, without Mr. Gollman and Mr. Beeler, it just wouldn't have been possible. Both of them have played a great part in helping develop these students and their skills. So I'm really, I'm so excited about this particular project, and I'm so pleased with the work that you guys have done and...
Just the opposite.
Just how you guys have grown and developed over the last few years.
That part could be used, it almost meets the properties of aluminum. We use another plastic called Ultum, which is a big printer she was talking about. It meets the flammability requirements for space, plastics are pretty tough. All right, let's go.
Our first student is Elizabeth Middlebrook. Isaiah Hyde. Samantha Mashburn. Colin Gray.
Oh, I didn't read the certificate to you, it's pretty cool what they did. They have their own ASTRO restoration patch, which is basically the patch they flew when they were astronauts. But they've added to this package some of the original Velcro they flew after it came back. I'm gonna say, it says, "Original pieces of Velcro flew on space station over 10.10 million miles on SDS 35", which is back in 1988, I'm thinking somewhere next, so that's a real piece of Velcro.
Noah Merritt.
Original?
We have two students that's not in attendance, Avon and Cruz Page. They're not here tonight, but they also participated in this particular project. If you guys will just stay there, I'm gonna call the next one, we'll do a group photo, okay? Our next group is our high school with Mr. Mike Beeler.
We'll do a middle school group photo and then a high school.
How are you doing good? They all worked on the same project, so it's hard to do more than one.
Thank you, Natalie.
All right.
Do we have enough room?
All right, I'll do one anyway, that's fine.
We'll be shorter kids next time, I say.
All right, guys. Perfect.
I'll look this way, one time.
She goes to a group photo outside.
Yeah, I'm gonna get a group photo of all y'all, so if y'all wanna go in, y'all can, just y'all can go right on the way, y'all don't have to stand there.
You're welcome, come back in here for the rest of the board meeting.
High school, Mr. Mike Beeler, our instructor. Max Howard. Aiden Clark.
Hey, Kim, I've known you since you were a young guy.
Congratulations.
Tristan Harris.
Congratulations.
Silas Bean. And we have one student that's not in attendance, Elijah Aaron.
This one, just one time.
Thank you guys so much. Also want to say that this particular group too is part of our healthcare collaboration group that designed the students ideas that you guys just passed around from somebody's thought, like. They took their thought, kind of a hand sketch, and these guys put it to life, so that was pretty awesome. I want to recognize them for that as well.
I'm proud, I mean, there's a lot of good things happening in DeKalb. I don't wanna brag about the school because I live it, but I got a lot of city schools. City school kids tend to be a little bit spoiled, and they're there just because they're there and they don't want to learn. These guys and gals are willing to learn, it makes a big difference. I'm just talking for simple things like eye contact, you know? You talk to the city kids, they talk to their hands, they have phone right? And it's just eye contact is not there, it's past your shoulder. They get it, but they don't get the detail these guys want it, and these guys are gonna go somewhere, you know? I'm proud of them. So give y'all some another.
I think Ms. Hill wants a group photo outside.
Yes, I'm going to take a group photo with you guys.
Anybody who wants a couple of brochures, please take them ready, these fish is good meat for the resume.
Don't you love the road and chair?
We actually have.
I don't know, it's like a movie, I watch it all the time.
So we were just discussing, they were asking why we are picked and selected as a school of excellence for NASA Hunch. And the reason being is we are more focused and centralized on the NASA Hunch program because I'm able to go and hands-on oversee third through 12th grade, that's never happened before. So we're modeling that, and I'm wanting to oversee and model how we're aligning the program for a national level so other schools can do the same, have somebody that's assistant director over NASA Hunch in their school system to be able to grow the program as we're doing here in DeKalb.
So we really are becoming a national model.
Yes, we are, we already are.
And the variety of disciplines I'm looking at, there's so many different disciplines touched. It's not just physical science or not just space.
Well, next up is our director of CTA, Ms. Toni Gatlin. And DCS mechatronics teacher, Mr. Mike Beeler.
Y'all just getting a bunch of niggas in my eye. What I'm asking for, and I think there's been some confusion that's happening, that's exactly what I'm asking for. There's two things that I put in the PEO here. One of them is a learning system, de-learning system, and the other is a trainer. Basically, the mechatronics is three years, and there's three disciplines under each year. So technically, these are all hands-on activities. Well, right now in the lab, we have one trainer. I've been able to piece stuff together from the intro class using the DC theory, using electronics kits and stuff like that. We have AC theory. I have no trainers at all for my third year class.
And this is a trainer, is that a tool?
It's a learning station. It's on the left side, I guess I should finish this for her.
This is the big blue.
Yeah, I'll do this, Chris. This actually runs the CTA budget, and this is gonna replace the learning machine. This has kind of industry standard as opposed to the learn mic stuff. And actually, it has virtual trainers for everything, and I can almost teach the whole course with virtual trainers using this software. Just to drop something on you, we're meeting with Roper tomorrow. We made a contact with Roper, they're training people already as mechatronics people.
No pressure.
No pressure.
And you guys know they had an exchange in at Roper, so 600 plus jobs. I think 118 million dollars was invested in Roper, and they're the largest employer in Moana County. So this is, this could be a great partnership for us and for our students, so this is exactly what Roper is here, so.
They're actually going through GNTC. I'm not sure, I haven't found out yet if it's a certificate or if it's a degree program. I'll find out tomorrow, we can talk with them. But this is how they're trained for, to work behind Roper for the mechatronics. thing. And so, this is the software I'd like to switch to, four grand a year, site license, unlimited users, all, access to all those different, um, modules that are in there. Uh, that's what we're running through the CTA budget, that's the four thousand. Then the second slide, this is a mechanical drives trainer, which is one of the big sections in that third year course. And that's the twenty thousand, these trainers are crazy. I had the guy come out from Annarion giving me a quote on everything we needed to fill out, what we're missing. Y'all didn't see that question. It like gave me a heart attack, there was no way I was gonna get it, 'cause I know some of these guys. It's about a hundred sixty grand. So, I picked the one thing out of there that I thought we needed the most urgently. Um, and this is about how, learning how to line a belt drives, how to line a chain, chain drives, replace chains, pony braking, all that stuff, and the twenty grand includes the trainer and the toolkit that goes with it. So, that's, that's kind of the request I was asking for the PEO system.
So, that's everything that we see here?
Yes.
Yes. This is what's lost, we've been in for a loss. So, the slide prior to that, CTA is gonna pay for that for this year, uh, and then hope, hopefully, we can introduce that to Roper and show them.
Hopefully, we need a partnership by this.
And, you know, that's future jobs for our students too, so that's what we're looking at, is like job projections for our students once they graduate. We have, we have several students that work over there, um, and with expansion to its G appliances, so...
I'm gonna tell you, when I emailed the guy, finally got a contact, my name, he replied within an hour, he'll be asking if he was interested in coming up and seeing the facilities and seeing if we can do some kind of partnership, so, I figured he'd be very, very interested. He's actually got his piece coming, and he's bringing two guys that are, that work with the training program.
Well, at, on April the fifth, uh, at each fall, we do what we call a college probe fair, where there's a lot of colleges in the southeast, set up in the commons, kids can carousel around their table. In spring, we are first one, April fifth, we're planning a career fair, where it's local business and industry, same setup, they'll come in, give us seniors an opportunity to carousel around, Roper has committed to coming on site, um, give the seniors an opportunity to go around, ask questions, provide lunch, and then after lunch, give the business and industry that want to stay, they'll be able to go into our CTA classrooms and labs to see what the kids are doing, teaching every day in those, in those programs.
So, about how many kids are served with this?
Um, I have twenty-one in that class currently, in the third, third year.
The third year, and so...
There's, I guess if you add my two semesters together, I've got a lot of experience, you know, we're, we're about a hundred fifty, a hundred seventy kids total.
So, how many on Level Two now that will move up to Level Three next year?
Um, my AC theory last semester had fifteen in it, and this semester has twenty-two, so it'll be thirty-seven next year. At least they, as long as you take care of them, they'll last, uh, it's not like this is a, once a year, I think they told, somebody told me that the, uh, current equipment, the job master that we have in the room is about six years old now. And it's, I spend a lot of time preparing it, that's, you know, a lot of the time is what I'm looking at.
And what is, what, what a partnership with Roper would like to power they, so...
I'm hoping we get some funding out of this, but, you know, they could, they may be willing to go with the trainers that we need to have the kids train to be Roper-ready for like a little better turn at this point.
So, they're really looking for work staff?
Yeah.
They're, they're looking for us to be a direct being?
And I think, I was, I haven't really, I just emailed the guy, haven't had a face-to-face with him yet, but, uh, it really seems like they're thinking that, you know, they're paying per student to train GNTC, so if we have kids that are doing the same training here, that's money that I might pay.
So, it's really to their advantage to have us do the training for them free, and then have a trained workforce?
Yes, yes.
I'm hoping to help us.
And starting salaries there, you know, I mean, you're looking at eighteen dollars an hour, uh, so, you know, the more students...
When they put them through their program or do they, like, do they get, like, their employees now, do they get, took that out of that, what will our kids...
That's what I've gotta find out from them, is, is whether that's just a certification program, or whether it's a degree program. It's kind of an impromptu meeting, like, just last week, they reached out, Tom, and said they, yeah, well, that's their idea, in the last week. So, you'll have a lot more information after that. Yeah, I think so, yeah. I'm glad you've already got what they're looking for.
And we can always come back and re-deliver, you know, that, so, all the...
No, that's it. Yeah, that's the call, the twenty thousand is the mechanical drives and the toolkit kind of thing. Well, so, this, um, system is not in addition to what the guy, it would be replacing something we need to replace anyway, correct? No, sir, this is something we don't have at all. Okay.
So, it prepares our kids to become workforce-ready?
You know, I'm, you know, I'm learning this mechatronics as I'm digging into it and figuring it out, and really, it's, people like it 'cause it's multiple disciplines. So, you know, you've got hydraulics, robotics, you've got AC, you've got DC, um, and so, instead of hiring four people to work these positions, I narrow it down. So, and I think, I haven't, I haven't seen the numbers on Roper, but some of the, one of the projects the kids like to do is job, right there, coming straight out of high school, and there's jobs in Chattanooga, but this, we start doing about sixty degree a year.
Well, it may not be the same software, but the same mechanical systems as, um, the Volkswagen plant, it's a lot of tech, I mean, you got the bot, you got the body side, you got the mechatronic side.
So, our location in Dade County is even more important to have this program, because we feed...
Oh, thanks.
A lot of, of, um, that sort of workforce.
Right, and that's really what we're looking at, to build these programs in the future, is where our students end up working, you know, and so, tracking that, we do have several students that are currently at Roper, and their parents, parents that are working there, so that's how we landed the connection, and immediately, they were excited to reach out to us, so, yeah, very quick, so, it's, you know, I think it's a great opportunity for, for us, and for the programs.
Alright, thank you. Next up, under Department Reports, we have Director of Information Technology and Network Services, Mrs. Rose Green.
Just sort of update, um, we were in the last meeting, I kind of said what we're gonna apply for E-Rate, some of those items. We, uh, we, sometimes E-Rate goes super smooth, and sometimes it doesn't, and, uh, we've been in a funding, we have an E-Rate consultant that does phenomenal work, they applied for one type of funding, and our vendor applied for a different type. We got down to the last week, and they had a couple of photos applied, and so, we worked with both those entities, and myself, and Paula Stallings, and Amy Cole, and we, last week, got our funding. So, that was eighty percent, that number, seventy-one thousand is eighty percent, that's what E-Rate pays for our internet connection, the management of our LAN, our ten gig internet, for the entire school system, and the LAN management that connects every building, so, that was kind of a, it's one of those things where, once they flag something, they take their time in doing the right thing, that money made the entire count last week, so, we're good with that. So, that was just one of those big stressors that kind of carried on, carried on, and we, we got a result, so. Um, in the realm of E-Rate items, I hope to do the network managed services for E-Rate, it's not allowing us to be specific enough to, um, ensure that we have quick response service if we needed it, whereas, that could mean that someone in Arizona just went to bed and sends somebody as a contractor down here to look at our network that's never seen it, we don't want that. Current, so company's doing a good job, we just think that perhaps there's a way to get a little bit better rate, and so, I would personally like to take network managed services and just put an RFP out with the specifications that we want, and I'd say, I mean, best case scenario, they drop their prices, and we get a better deal and get the exact same services, or another vendor that is close enough to actually provide us with qualified certified service, um, gets paid. I mean, so it's just kind of a, I can't do it through E-Rate, and ensure that we're gonna have the service that we need, so I'd like to put out an RFP to do that. And it just basically, we're, I know we'll have the same companies probably bid, most of which are gonna be Dalton and Chattanooga, 'cause thirty-minute response time kind of really cuts it down to what you can gear, and we don't want a non-contracted, non-employed person to come look at it, does not know our network, so we're, we're receiving really good service in the world of cybersecurity and ransomware and backup and recovery, we're gonna be sure we're in a good spot, we are, but I'd like to get the best deal we can deal, get on that as well, so. That's kind of the part of E-Rate that I was hoping to do, I thought I wanted to do with E-Rate, but it really just didn't fit. So, we are doing a couple of E-Rate projects, we're getting a, a switch for each building, these switches range, that, these days with supply chain, you can't get anything that is specific model, usually within like a couple of months these days to get it. That doesn't work, we have one dying in a building, we need a spare, so basically, uh, we're looking to get seven switches, uh, this is out there as for seventy-three E-Rate, uh, we did pay eighty percent, those range based on the capabilities, probably from four to seven to eight thousand dollars apiece, based on what we need. Eighty percent would be covered that way, it's out there, it's already being bid on, and, uh, we're just looking to do that. We've got two places we probably need to replace switches, we don't have enough ports, and these are highly capable switches that'd be good for many years to come, they're, they're beyond what we have, and will last for years to come. The other E-Rate, um, item was just to get, we're using old telecom cabinetry in our server room, so we have some extremely sensitive, expensive equipment that, you know, is not getting as cooled as well as it probably should, uh, we've got doors that don't fit with the way things are mounted, it's designed to put old telecom equipment in, not network gear, so, just getting two new cabinets and having everything neatened up and straightened up in cabinets would be good for the gear, it'll send alerts to let you know when the temperature's too low, too high, if you kind of power out of it, it'll, it'll alert us to let us know, so we can respond to it, and right now, it's, we had a storm, I think I was out there, so let's go check. I usually get alerts from our network managed service group to let me know if these things happen, but I'd rather get my own alerts and their alerts, and be sure about that. That's just sort of an update on the things we're doing right now, and, like I said, I'd hope to take that network managed services out, so more of it can be paid for, um, then it's going to be more of an internal, we already pay internally now, so it's, that won't change, I do want to give us a better price if it possibly can.
What do you think the competitive market like, is like for network managed services within the twenty-five to thirty mile...
Right, I will, I would say there's probably, with all the services that we require on the scale that we are, there's probably less than ten companies in this area that can do it, and I hope we get, you know, if we get three or four that do a thorough bid, uh, we use a rubric to evaluate all their offerings and price, and we'll pick a winner closely, but, there won't be, it, doing the four seventy-three E-Rate, we could've, if we could've been, same deal, if we could be as specific as we want, we'd still get those same eighteen, and doing it nationally without those specifications, we'd probably get a hundred and fifty that don't even know what they're doing, and maybe here, they don't offer what we need, so, we wanted insurance, we had at least as good as what we've gotten now, so, you know, we're, we're not stepping back, it's still important, so. That was just, I just wanted to update you on where we were, and where we're hopefully on, so.
Next, under Superintendent's Report, we have recognition of stakeholders, and then we'll move right into Character Strong in Dade County Schools. Starting with, uh, stakeholders, uh, we'll first recognize them, and we are blessed with all the stakeholders support, uh, in Dade County, uh, at this moment, we will send a special thanks to the following stakeholders, we had NASA Hunch here, uh, a few moments ago, uh, the Trenton Dade Optimist Club for sponsoring our, uh, our oratorical contests, and, uh, the essay contest, Dade First Family Connection, uh, Alliance for Dade, Dade County Commission, and the Trenton City Commission, so, certainly, it takes a collaborative effort of all of these organizations working together for, to improve, uh, the, uh, our outcome, to help improve our outcomes. Moving into Character Strong, uh, Davis Elementary, we'd like to recognize Justin Parham and Jet Howard for always demonstrating respect while at school, and then, Ms. Townsend, Marcia Townsend always addresses each and everyone in the cafeteria as ma'am or sir, no matter student or girl, she is always listening, so she may answer and know the complete story first, what a very respectful, respectful individual she is. Ms. Townsend's always professional, respectful, and kind to coworkers and students, she's patient and loving, she respects and appreciates differences in others, and I admire this about Ms. Townsend. At Dade Elementary, we have Leila Davis, Ms. Tanya Stevens had this to say about Leila, Leila Davis is a very respectful student who always strives to be kind and nice to others, out of her respect for others, Leila makes it a priority to always participate in school and community service projects, she cares about the needs of her classmates, teachers, and school, she always puts others first, and will do anything she can to assist them, she gets along well with everyone, and is happy to work with any of her peers, and they are happy to work with her, she works hard at everything she does, and does not give up, so congratulations to Leila Davis. Dade Elementary Staff Member, Ms. Chrissy Emmett, SRO Amanda Lent is recognizing Ms. Chrissy Emmett as the character recipient for respect, it was brought to Officer Lent's attention that Ms. Emmett recognized a man at a local Trenton business who is in medical distress, Ms. Emmett called for emergency help and got an ambulance to the man in need, so congratulations to Ms. Chrissy Emmett. At Dade Middle School, uh, the February Medal of Honor recipients, we have Ms. Chloe Bradford and Cameron Morris for respect, and then the staff member at Dade Middle School was Mr. Jerry Jobs. At Dade High School, we had Kendall Emmett, uh, she shows respect in and out of the classroom, she treats everyone with respect, and is overall just a great person, uh, and Noah Owensby, Noah is the type of person that treats people with respect, he always shows respect to his teachers and treats his fellow students with respect each day, so congratulations to them, and then the staff member at the high schools, Mr. Stan Gibby. Mr. Gibby is a type of person you can depend on, he treats other teachers and his students with respect, you know, if ever need, you know, if you ever need help with something, you can always go up to Mr. Gibby, so congratulations to all of those individuals. And that concludes everything in our, uh, everything in the superintendent's report.
Okay, uh, the first thing we're gonna be looking at tonight is our general fund monthly financial, and as you can see, we're at fifty, fifty-eight point thirty-three percent of the fiscal year being complete, that's from July one, twenty twenty-one, to January thirty-first, twenty twenty-two. And in the first section, you will see our general fund revenue, and if you'll look over to the red, the gray area, we're at sixty-eight point seventeen percent in our revenue collections, and as, as I mentioned earlier, we're only at fifty-eight point thirty-three percent of the year being complete. The next sech, the next section is our, um, general fund expenditures, and again, look over to the red, and you'll see, uh, our expenditures are at fifty-nine point eleven percent through January thirty-first, twenty twenty-two, we're over just a little bit, and as I say every month, that's because we have paid so many one-time expenditures at the beginning of the year. And the last part of this, uh, this page, the ending balance for general fund, July first, twenty twenty-one, that's when we close our fiscal year, twenty-one, was it That's when we closed our fiscal year twenty-one, was at four million, four hundred and five thousand, four sixty-three, ninety-four. Total revenues year-to-date through January was thirteen million, four sixty-three, one hundred, eighteen dollars and sixty-six cents. Total expenditures through January twenty twenty-two was eleven million, one hundred and five thousand, nine thirteen, forty-one, leaving our ending balance in the general fund for January the thirty-first, twenty twenty-two at six million, seven hundred, sixty-two thousand, six sixty-nine, nineteen. And you may think that's a little large, but if you'll remember, the past several months, we got a big collections from our tax commissioner's office. So you'll see on the next page how bad it's coming down. The next page is our tabular taxes. January twenty-two, we collected a hundred and twenty-eight thousand, eight hundred, sixty dollars and twelve cents. In January twenty twenty-one, we collected a hundred and thirty-three thousand, four hundred, seventy-five dollars and six cents. Collections were down in January of this year by four thousand, six hundred, fourteen dollars and ninety-four cents. The second line is our T A B T taxes. For January twenty twenty-two, we collected sixty-six thousand, four forty-two, forty. And for January twenty-one, we collected sixty-four thousand, six eighty-one, eighteen. And that's a difference of one thousand, seven sixty-one, twenty-two. The next section is our S W A S five, the ending balance for December twenty twenty-one was two million, seven hundred, twelve thousand, eight hundred and twenty-five dollars. Interest was three hundred, sixty-six dollars and ninety cents. And on that third line, where you see the two sixty-six, oh eighty-three, sixty-eight, Georgia Department of Revenue, we've already set up a new bank account for S W A S six. They put this money in S W A S six account last month, so I had to show it in transit last month. So it's showing up now what it was for the month of December. And in January, we collected two hundred, seventy-two thousand, three oh four, seventy-one. We have outstanding checks totaling eleven thousand, one eighty-nine, thirty-five. We have issued checks that's cleared the bank for January, seventy-five thousand, two hundred, twelve dollars and twenty-five cents, leaving our ending balance in the S W A S five account at three million, one hundred, sixty-five thousand, one seventy-eight, sixty-nine. And the only thing I will be reporting in this account from now on will be the interest that we earn in it. The revenue from the Department of Revenue will be going in our S W A S six account starting next month. The last section is a comparison of our S W A S revenue for the past three years. In fiscal year twenty, we collected two hundred, twenty-eight thousand, nine sixty-one, sixty. Fiscal year twenty-one, we collected two hundred, twenty-three thousand, four eighteen, forty-three. And for January twenty twenty-two, we collected two hundred, seventy-two thousand, three oh four, seventy-one. And if you'll notice, our collections are up by forty-eight thousand, eight eighty-six, twenty-eight from twenty twenty-one. I know, it's also in there. And the next report that we have highlighted in gray is something that state auditors are making us do every year, I mean, every month now. And this is a list of all of their grants, and it just says the percentage over to the right of what we have expended and what we have collected. And sometimes, if you see a negative, we have to requisition this money, we just don't have time to do it. But this is something that we're going to have to present to the school board every month from now on. The next page is our S W A S five account is a summary report. And if you'll look at the first column in the blue, I have it broken down by facility, how much we have spent on each school. And I'm not going to read that to you, you can see the numbers. But for the month of January, in from Dade Elementary, Davis, Dade Middle, Dade High, Central Office, and Transportation, we have spent eighty thousand, twenty-eight dollars and twenty-two cents. And the gray column is what we have expended year-to-date by facility. And the reports that follow this, we have it broken down, what every vendor is and what we paid since the beginning of S W A S five. And the last thing I'm going to talk about, this is what Mr. Engel had asked me to do, this is their construction in progress. And this is for the Dade Middle School gym, our contractors, P and C Construction. And as you can see, January the thirty-first, we paid sixty-one thousand, six sixty-five, forty-five, leaving our balance for this project at three hundred, seventy thousand, nine sixty-six, fifty-six. And you guys also have a financial for each school on what they have expended and what their ending balances are. And that's, I'm not going to read it, but if you have any questions, you can call me.
Next item is, I recommend that the board approve the amended plan for Davis Elementary and authorize Architect Ken Harless of K R H Architects to proceed with the plan.
All right, next is C T A.
I recommend that the board approve the purchase of the Mechatronics Lab equipment for the amount of twenty thousand, thirty dollars. This purchase is for the Mechanical Brown Learning System and the hand tool package that Mr. Bieber presented.
Did they say that the program, the licensing for the C T A program was paid for, that was for a thousand dollars?
Yes. I recommend the board approve the resolution to introduce redistricting as presented and as discussed.
And they remind me again as to why we're having to do this, because we vote as a whole, as a county.
It's not, it's population per district. Population per district. For example, District One was down to nearly six hundred citizens from the rest of the district. So we had to make District One a little bigger. Didn't mess with any of the commission seats, any of the school board seats, except in an upcoming election, it would allow someone else.
But it forces some people on Sand Mountain to vote in District One.
No, they voted the same.
Were their districts, the way the lines are, did that not pick up some in Sand Mountain?
You go to the same precinct, the election commission will just send a separate or additional child box for those that live or for those that are going to vote on Sand Mountain, but actually.
So they will still vote at the same time, whatever they choose?
Everybody votes at large.
But it, they'll just, their ballot will go in a separate box depending on where their address is? So for Sand Mountain, but they follow District One?
Yes, but they go vote where they want to.
And this does not affect issue?
When does it go into effect?
Well, it depends on when, after we, if the board approves this resolution, we'll send it to Representative Mike Cameron, and then the legislature will have to take action on it. So depending on how long that.
But then it all came about because Atlanta says you're wrong.
We're disproportionate.
And this allows us to match the commission, otherwise our districts would be all potential.
What do you mean, match?
By the numbers, by the population number right now, and regardless of what, you know, based on the census and based on the current map, there's a twenty-seven percent disproportionate rate, meaning District One is significantly smaller than the other districts by, I mean, your district, is smaller than our largest district by twenty-seven percent.
So if you get a, they took a lot of the money over the years?
It just puts all of them around forty-two hundred, around forty-two and forty-three hundred per district, as far as it's concerned. According to the census, which we all agree is, not that accurate, but it's all we've got.
But if we chose not to do anything, then what?
Well, you run a risk on the court saying, we'll redistrict for you, and then you have all the.
When does that run into a problem where we would be pushing the limits for the court to have to do something?
Sooner rather than later, because the legislative boards are in session right now.
I just think that's ridiculous. We have one whole system. Everybody in the county votes. So why do they care if we redistrict for another? I just don't want it.
Let me ask a question. Actually, it's Rising Fund that lost the number, right? In the census?
As far as Rising Fund had the higher citizenship number.
They lost, they're the ones that lost, right? I mean, not that I should, I don't, if you ask.
District One, which is North Dade District. And so the, and I don't remember, was it Corey in the third line?
No, the proportion of office group, yeah, okay.
Okay, and they just took, for example, District One's line used to end at Fifth Street. It now ends at one thirty-six, except for this side here from the square. And I guess I just looked at the population per household, but I'm not sure how they count the numbers. But you just know that's what they sent up here.
Their district's in mine District Three, and the line was, District Three lost. So you can say.
The only one that lost, so that's what I was asking.
Well, it started at the back of the day.
Each district lost, lost about the same, yeah. But the main line difference is in District Three, you're correct. But as far as number of citizens go, each district lost about the same to make them all equal. We don't know why it's that way, frankly, I mean.
It don't make any difference, because it's at large, every district.
Everybody votes for everyone.
Whatever they want to do, to the commission, not about it.
Right. But ideally, we would, we do want to keep the district lines the same as the commission district lines. You don't want to have, even though it's possible, you don't want to have separate lines. It creates a whole lot of other issues.
Yeah, don't misunderstand. My understanding of it is agreeing with necessarily kind of the same vote as Jennifer. I wish it was something you didn't have to do, but I do think it's probably something we can have a lot of choice in. We just had some flexibility, Triple Word had some flexibility in making decisions based on those maps. If they didn't like it, they could go back. Whereas if we don't do it, you need to take the risk when the courts get involved, they say.
Decision's out of our hands.
Correct. For right now, it's more of local control.
Any more questions on that? Okay, next is Transit Cargo Van.
I recommend the board approve purchasing a twenty twenty-two Transit Connect cargo van, which was listed on the state bid contract list in the amount of twenty-eight thousand, nine hundred dollars. We have our technology guys, I've been in Dade County Schools for sixteen years, and each time they go to, go to each one of the schools, they're driving their personal vehicles, they're hauling equipment around in their personal vehicles. So I recommend purchasing this van for technology, so that they don't have to continue.
Do they deliver it to us for that first collection?
The. They deliver it to us based on across this playhouse amount. It should be here in March. Yes, we'll get magnets to the.
Any more questions? All right, the next item is public, that is the consent agenda discussion. Oh, I'm sorry. We had a P and C. Item six, P and C change order.
As you know, on Friday, I received an email from P and C Construction regarding your project at Dade Middle School. Because they exceeded the contract price, I recommend the board approve the change order in the amount of twenty thousand, three hundred and ninety-four dollars for the project at Dade Middle School for the gym.
I have a question about that. They're saying that's for not trenching the rocks except for.
Yes. Well, and they have to go back further.
Further than what they are fee said? Further than what.
That's the way I understood, the way, when I read it, that's the way I understood.
The reason I ask is because they already included the excavation rock, you know, trenching rock at two hundred and twenty dollars a cubic yard. That was already in the bid. So they already were accounting for that out. And we've already met the contingencies. So I think they need to cover it themselves, because they already bid it. In the worst, they would eat it.
Because of the trenching that the, the, what do you say, the, the rock trenching anyway. From what I read, my understanding was they're having to go back further than initially bid on the retaining walls. For example, the construction that's been done on the retaining walls so far, but because of the way the water sheds, I'm not sure what reasons. But now they're wanting that contractor to come back and cut those walls back even further, which is going to get into more rock. And that's where the contingencies are going to issue on the amount of rock. And just like they said in the letter before, if I'm a contractor, I mean, there's contracts I haven't been on, but when a customer wants an all-in contract to cover all the what-ifs, well, sure, I can give you a million and a half dollar bid, but nobody's going to take that, because I'm trying to make sure I'm covering my butt, covering all the what-ifs. When reality is, those may or may not happen, so you have to bid it at face value. And then when the rocks show up, or when certain things that disrupt it being straightforward like the bid, then they have the change order. Otherwise, we end up with nobody bidding on it, or the prices are somehow. That's the only, otherwise we, nobody bidding on it, or the prices or so, how we couldn't even discuss.
And is part of it also that they found rock that they didn't know?
That's correct, that was my understanding, from the letter that I read from PNC.
So then, then Ken have to come back and the drawings be redone for how much?
I don't know about that.
Ken, this is not part of Ken's project.
Okay, this is him.
Or a lawyer.
So have they had to come back and redo drawings to see how much further to change that?
No.
Or we're just going off what PNC has said?
We're going, they're going off the plans.
So, so that's what I'm saying, so if, if they're, if that's encompassed what the plans already have, and there's, and there's just more rock there than what they thought, they've already bid it, they've already got it in the bid. So then that's just twenty thousand more because they said, hey, we need a change order?
I don't think it's quite that simple, but it may, it may need some investigation.
I, I just, I would rather get more detailed information.
We'll just pull this item off for further discussion, okay?
So there's been some questions.
I mean, that kinda came up quick too, in Friday, now.
Yeah, that's what worries me, it will, you can't make them do that.
It'll come to a stop.
So if you, it's gonna cost us more, the way I see it, you get attorney, attorneys involved. I don't like change orders, but sometimes in that situation, especially with rock in our area.
Now, there should, I remember specifically requesting to make sure that a rock clause was included, so did they bid?
No, the rock clause, alright, so the, they bid as if there's not, but the rock clause was, they put in the rock clause to make sure we understood, if they hit rock, it's gonna cost extra money.
Right.
Which is what, exactly what happened. Rock clause covers them, it, all it did was let us know, hey, we're bidding on putting two terrace walls here, at so many feet, whatever. If we hit rock, school board, you need to understand, there's gonna be-
That's not included in the bid.
That's right, there's gonna be additional costs. The rock clause protects them, it wouldn't do anything to protect us. It, and, and essentially, this is exactly what's happened. They've hit the rock, they're saying, look, it's gonna cost twenty grand more for us to get there, and quite frankly, it's gonna cost twenty grand more to get what they think is gonna get there. There's still a chance that they run into more issues. I mean, there's a, there's a chance that this is not the only change order we've got. I'm not saying, I'm, I'm not, not saying that's how it's gonna go, but-
They don't know until they start bidding.
That's right, the side of that hill is a huge unknown.
Only way we're gonna know and not get worked stopped, 'cause if we don't approve this, and I, I don't like that, but if we don't approve it, they're gonna stop.
Well, it makes perfect sense to me, so-
And so what are our alternatives?
There's not, we, we can, the only reason for us to, to stop, to not approve it right now, is to get some questions answered, and I totally understand your questions, that's not a problem. Just understand, getting those questions answered, and, and I guess, I'm not explaining enough, again, my understanding, you know, it doesn't mean that I'm necessarily all for it, I'm just, I've, I've read the letter from them, and I, and I've had to bid on similar jobs, and I understand where those expenses come from, that there's, sometimes there's nothing you can do about it. With, they put the rock clause in for a time such as this, and from what I've read, that's exactly what's happened, they hit the rock that they were scared they were gonna hit, and hoped that they wouldn't, and that's costing more money to go further back to get the proper, proper walls. So I don't know if, if they had tried to do what they had, to keep from having to file a change order, you know, I don't know why the walls are where they are, and now they've gotta go back further, that's what it would sound like to me. They, they hit a rock, and I said, you know what, let's see if this works. I mean, I don't speculate, so if you wanna-
Contingency for that part.
Right, so if you wanna wait and ask questions, you know, I'm, I'm fine with that. Just understand it is what it is.
I think it costs us more than the wire.
And at the end of the day, does it have to be done, at the end of the day?
That's correct, it does. If we want it finished, to stop it right where it's at.
Just a little bit.
If, no, we're gonna have the, the same issue.
So we're on, I don't wanna take a chance, I'm at forward here.
And I don't think it's anything bad to get to PNC by anything, anybody that did that job would run into the same thing, as far as that, so.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
I know you're into construction and this one, but when that bid was given out, and you're talking that, why was core drilling not done? Why didn't they do a core drill? I mean, it would've cost you less money to, and hardly had a core drill made on it.
Sure, maybe.
I ain't on my piece.
Now, I'm, when I say that I know something about this, I'm talking about bidding a job. I, I don't know anything about-
But in general, people bid, even a lot of this construction, when they go in and bid a job, it's just like out there at that school, they core drill before they'll, you know, instead of you putting in a bid like that, you spend fifteen hundred, wait, they say, eight, six, five, four thousand, whatever they charge, to come out and do a core drill, and they'll tell you what that rock is.
Yeah, I got no idea. Like I said, I don't know how you build a wall.
Before you release a bid, or a bid out, you, there's core drilling.
So maybe, maybe they should've bid core drilling, maybe we should've required it.
You know what I'm, you know what I'm saying, I mean, it's-
Sure.
Okay.
I mean, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm sorry.
Yes. Do we wanna leave this on, or do we need to stop the project?
I don't think it's necessarily gonna stop the project, I mean, as far as for tomorrow to, to get some answers.
We're not gonna cost us anything.
Because of the policy, because of the amount, it's not good. Do you think the plan is supposed to be approved?
So can we, can we, can we add that line? What's the information we need to get? Okay, let's just remove this one. All right, the next item on the agenda is the public input, can we have public input? We have Mr. Davis sitting here to speak, and it's in progress, are we building it next?
Well, that's mainly, I'm just gonna ask what the progress is on it. I've been asking questions, and all I've given is in progress. I can't get no answers on, before we're at on the bids, or how things are moving along on it, it's been three years now, and we, we're not hearing that. I mean, have we got bids going, or? I know we've been turned down, supposedly on the rock, as y'all said, or I've heard that before, that nothing's in progress because of the rock. The bids, you know, as you had out or something, they ran into rock, or again, you go back to core drilling. There's such, I mean, you know, I understood that it was turned down on, because of the rock, we, we backed off, the contractor backed off going on down the rock.
We changed, changed the design, typically public input, we don't have to, but I do wanna explain to you exactly where we're, that's why a minute ago, when we went over the, the resolution for this, that's why I brought that up, if we had a plan, if, if you wanna step around here afterwards, I can show you the plan, I mean, it's public, until we finish, but I can show you the plan, but we have a plan. We've, actually, we've been through a few plans due to the rock, initially, there was gonna be a basement, but like you said, the rock changed that for us, and we now have a plan that will be getting approved after this, or as soon as we adjourn here in a minute, on that building, and we'll be moving forward. I'll tell you, one reason it took so long is 'cause everything takes a damn long. I mean, I don't know what the right answer for that is, but nothing moves fast when it comes to this stuff.
I agree, you know, to that point, I understand what you're doing, I mean, I know what things has been in, in on the last year, some way things are, but-
We've got a building drawn, and we've agreed on it.
But, yeah, that's, that's just it, I mean, we're-
Right, yeah, we're voting on it tonight.
Most of you, you know, I've got a Dollar States at school, of course, I'm giving her hard enough time anyway, I, I get her up and down, and I say, I wonder what's going on? She says, well, all she can hear is it's in progress. Well, that's not a good answer, in progress is not a good answer, I mean, not over a three-year period, I mean, for last year, that's what I've been hearing, it's in progress. Well, I mean, like the public would like it at least, or, you know, to know what kind of drawings has been changed, what's happening, or, you know, I mean, all that costs money, I understand that, everybody-
Unfortunately, just like with staff, property and staff has to be handled in executive session, that's just the law, the way I understand it, that's what we have to do. And so, until, until there's something approved, which will be tonight, we can't, there's a law we can't say, so the only answer we can give legally is, we're, we're looking over, trying to cross all of our Ts and dot all of our Is, and that's, that's where we're at.
Well.
It's on the agenda to vote tonight.
Well, that's good, 'cause I've always, I have also heard, and I know this will hit some people, but I've also heard that, is it necessary, is that, do we necessarily need, I mean, that's been a comment from the board, I'm sure. Do we, do we actually need those rooms out there? Yeah, we need those rooms out there. I mean, we're losing money out there, and we're losing teachers, we're losing our pre-K and all that, you know, it's not there. But, the schools, you know, it's an old school, and I'm tied to it in a lot of ways, I don't care to tell you, but I'm, you know, my whole family's been, been tied into the education of Davis for my life, all the way back, and it's named after my mother, so. And I just like, you know, my mother taught there for thirty-five years, Dollar States in there now, different ones, and it's just something that I don't wanna say dropped, I wanna say, I mean, I know it's gonna cost, it's, it's my, and then, things has doubled in the last couple of years in price, I know, but, but that's, that's what I want, I want your progress, I mean, that's just, that's what I want.
That's what we got for you tonight?
Yeah.
Progress. And regardless of how, what rumors have been out there, we are united in the decision that's being made tonight, so we're good.
Thank you for your support. Thank you so much.
Appreciate it.
Okay, it's time to vote on the consent agenda, so with removing the bottom number six, do I hear a motion to approve the consent agenda, Adams, one through the box?
Make a motion.
So.
Okay, all in favor? Do you need a motion to enter to executive session for personnel or property?
Make a motion.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor?